Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the open meeting notice dated June 18, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidoo.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Present.
President Fox.
Here.
All right. If you can, please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll just do it together. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed sessions and hearings and comments?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced in her prior the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting by YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the bottom of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of a governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated June 18, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specific times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or needed for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Also, I'd like to add, if anyone is not speaking, if you would please mute yourself and when you are prepared to speak, please unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to add also that we are now going to be following the guidelines that were adopted in the resolution of May 26 about how we're going to be running our meetings remotely using the Zoom platform with call-in. The past few meetings, we've allowed emails as well, just as we're transitioning over to give everyone time to become comfortable with the technology. But the emails coming in throughout the meeting poses some logistical difficulties for the clerk and for just keeping track of what's going on. And so to most closely replicate a real meeting where comments are only accepted through public comment in person, we will be doing the same now through Zoom and the phone Zoom platform. Instructions are on the front page of the city website, cityofsummit.org. And if we do receive any emails, they will be addressed, they will not be read out loud, they will be addressed after the meeting by an email reply. So with that, we will move on. We don't have any minutes to approve tonight. We will defer the minutes till the July 8 meeting. And we'll move on to reports. Our first report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I have quite a bit of things to say in my report, so bear with me. First of all, recycling. The city has updated its recycling procedures effective July 1, and it includes the following. Recycling bins should be placed curbside before 6:00 a.m. every Thursday, except a holiday when collection will take place on Friday. Pickup will occur between 7:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Mist materials should be left at the curb, and pickup will be completed on Fridays. Recycled materials should be clean, dry, and placed in a covered bin. Glass, aluminum, tin cans and lids, and plastic marked #1, #2, and #5 will be accepted and can be commingled. Recycled items should not be placed in plastic bags. If placed in a plastic bag, the recycling will not be collected. Notice will be provided the resident with the reason for non-collection of material. Residents are highly encouraged to recycle curbside items rather than at the municipal transfer station. It's important to understand that the city pays for each property owner to recycle curbside in its recycling contract. When the recycling is taken to the transfer station, the city is charged for the items that are collected there as well, so it's a double. For more information about recycling guidelines and how to report a pickup or a list of items that can and cannot be recycled, please visit the city website at cityofsummit.org/recycle. Tomorrow, Wednesday, June 24, Acting Superintendent Michael Caputo and I will co-host a recycling question and answer session at 11:00 a.m. on Facebook Live. Go to the city Facebook page at that time to learn more about recycling in Summit. The 2020 Census. I would like to thank everyone. 73.8% of residents in Summit have completed the census. In 2010, that number was 75.4%. The update also contained a breakdown by neighborhood showing where my complete count committee can focus its efforts. As I've been reminding everyone, filling out the census is incredibly important for future state and federal aid. If you've not already done so, go to my2020census.gov and complete the census today. It takes less than three minutes to complete and is completely confidential. It is also in several languages, and you can do it on your smartphone. You just need to go to my2020census.gov, insert your name and address, and off you go. Mail-in ballots. As mandated by the State of New Jersey Executive Order 144, vote-by-mail ballots for the Tuesday, July 7 primary election will be automatically mailed to all registered Democrat and Republican Party voters. Unaffiliated and inactive voters will receive an application to vote by mail. Ballots and applications will include a prepaid return postage stamp. Sample ballots will not be mailed this year. The Union County Board of Elections is accepting vote-by-mail ballots from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. Vote by mail postmarked on or before Election Day, July 7, and received by Tuesday, July 14, to be counted. Executive Order 144 also requires polling locations to comply with New Jersey State COVID-19 guidelines and restrictions. Maintaining a physical distance of six feet from other voters and wearing a mask are required in all polling locations. Postcards containing information on polling locations will be mailed to every registered voter in Summit. The Union County Board of Elections has designated three polling locations in Summit for in-person voting from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on July 7. Voting machines will be available for voters with disabilities. Ward 1, Districts 1 to 6 will vote at Summit High School located at 125 Kent Place Boulevard. Ward 1, Districts 7 to 12 will vote at Washington School located at 507 Morris Avenue. Ward 2 will vote at the Summit Community Center located at 100 Morris Avenue. Districts 1 to 6 will vote in the Guida Gym. Districts 7 to 13 will vote in the Investors Bank Gym. For more information, please contact the Summit Office of the City Clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org or call 908-273-6400. And lastly, the Summit Police Department has been contacted by a former Summit High School graduate who was organizing a protest march on Sunday, June 28, 2020. The event is to commence at approximately 2:00 p.m. on the Village Green and march from the green through the center of town and back to the Village Green. The organizer is promoting the event on social media titled "The People's Protest." I want to thank the Summit Police for working with the organizers to ensure they are provided with a safe and secure route, allowing them an opportunity for their voices to be heard as they march from the Village Green through the center of town and back. And the Mayor's Forum will be holding in the near future a Zoom community meeting to discuss all the issues that have been going on in our community and throughout the country shortly. And having these conversations continue is very, very important. So that's all I have, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers for the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Council President, and good evening, everyone. I'll start off with a reminder. All city buildings will reopen to the public on Monday, July 6, at 8:00 a.m. Masks will be required to enter city facilities, and citizens are asked to maintain a safe physical distance of six feet between themselves and staff. City offices are currently observing summer hours. They are Monday to Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. As warmer weather arrives, the Westfield Regional Health Department warns about feeding and interacting with wildlife and stray animals. Please take precaution and call the police non-emergency number at 908-273-0051 if you encounter aggressive or distressed wildlife. Atlantic Health Systems has provided the city with signage to help promote workplace safety, good health, and hygiene during the COVID-19 pandemic. If you are a local business looking for signage to post in your location, please contact press office at cityofsummit.org, and someone from the Communications Office will email you printable files. And then finally, the Summit Police Department has rescheduled its annual National Night Out event from Tuesday, August 4 to Tuesday, October 6, following a request from the National Association of Town Watch to move the annual event to the first Tuesday of October to help prevent the spread of COVID-19 coronavirus. Summit, along with communities throughout the country, is postponing the event. National Night Out is a community building event that annually takes place on the first Tuesday in August. A variety of federal, state, county, and municipal level agencies generally come together with community members in an effort to build a safer and well-connected community. That's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Now on to the Council President's report, and you'll bear with me this evening. I have a lot of information about reopening, which is good news. So members of council, mayor, rater, and city staff have been working since April to plan for the reopening of Summit in a smart way that protects public health and supports our local businesses. We've spent many hours listening to Summit businesses and working with SDI to create plans that will assist our businesses as they reopen and that will revive our downtown and the neighborhood business districts. I'm thrilled that many of these plans are coming to fruition, with 16 sidewalk cafe and outdoor dining permits that were approved as of the end of last week and more on the way. Businesses need to submit applications to take advantage of the sidewalk cafes and parklets. The application process can take time for the submission of a complete application and the review by all the city departments who need to make a determination before a permit would be issued. For cafes, that also requires a liquor license expansion, and for parklets, council must also approve these applications. So that takes a little time to get everything processed and on to the council agenda. This is particularly important in the case of parklets, which require careful weighing of the competing interests of the restaurants and other businesses as well as the public. The approval process will include the opportunity for public comment to allow council to fully consider these applications before voting. Council will be holding a special meeting on Monday, June 29, at 7:30 to consider some of the parklet and sidewalk cafe liquor license expansion applications that were not ready for this evening's meeting. Our goal by doing this was to hope to get the permits issued before the July 4 weekend. So next, so on Friday, look for an agenda packet, which will include the applications that will be considered. It will be posted on the city's website on Friday. And the meeting will once again have a notice like this, so members of the public are free to join and comment on the applications. Starting tomorrow morning, Lyric Park will be expanded, and tables and chairs will be placed in the first seven spaces in the Bank Street lot. This is late breaking news as of about 4 o'clock this afternoon. Four more spots will be made available for 15-minute curbside pickup spots. I hope to see you all around as we begin enjoying Summit safely in the coming days and weeks. I have some more good news. The Summit Free Public Library has reopened its book drop. Starting Thursday, residents will be able to reserve books for lobby pickup, which will start on Monday, June 29. And you can visit summitlibrary.org for all the information on how to do this. The Summit Family Aquatic Center will reopen on July 1. And you can visit summitcommunityprograms.com for reopening guidelines and how to join and all the other information that you'll need. On another topic, rental assistance. The State of New Jersey COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Program enrollment will open from July 6 to July 10. Temporary rental assistance is available to low and moderate income households that have been negatively impacted financially by COVID-19. Applicants must meet income and eligibility requirements. Go to cityofsummit.org for more information. And finally, 4th of July. Summit will be hosting a scaled-down 4th of July program to comply with the ongoing COVID-19 guidelines and restrictions from the State of New Jersey. We will be striving to preserve many of the beloved 4th of July traditions. Unfortunately, we cannot hold fireworks or other activities that would encourage mass gatherings of more than 500 people. So there will be Independence Day festivities starting on Saturday, July 4, at 9:30 with the flag-raising ceremony at Soldier's Memorial Field at 5 Myrtle Road Avenue. The ceremony will be followed by a fancy dress contest and walk-around memorial field for senior citizens at 9:45. Judges will select three of the most festive and best-dressed participants to win a prize. A decorated bicycle parade for children will begin, as we do every year, starting then this year, it will start at 10:00 a.m. with prizes awarded for the best decorated bike in each age category. Preschool-age children will ride in the parade at 10:00 a.m. Children 5 through 7 will ride at 10:30, and children 8 and older will ride at 11:00 a.m. Masks will be required for all participants in the fancy dress contest and the bike parade, and groups will be asked to maintain a distance of six feet away from one another. All of those attending the memorial field event should practice physical distancing and are asked to please wear face covering. For more information, please visit the Department of Community Programs website at summitcommunityprograms.com or call 908-277-2932. Now, we are on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, members of the public have an opportunity to comment on any matter that is not on the agenda. Is there anyone who'd like to make a comment about something not on the agenda? See some raised hands. Nicole, will you be recognizing people, or how do we do this?
Rosemary, you're muted.
Council President, if you will speak, just call out the first name that you see that's raised their hand, and then Nicole will unmute them.
Okay, great. Okay. Robert Weekly has his hand up.
I'm sorry, mine was for an agenda item.
Okay, so we'll mute you back then, and when the item comes up that you want, raise your hand, okay? All right, so we have Eileen Kelly next.
Hi, good evening to the council. This is Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodlands Avenue. My question is concerning of the Union County kind of coordination with providing any feedback regarding any ballots that may have been sent incorrectly to voters in Summit, for example, Republican voters who received Democrat ballots. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do you have an answer to that question? I'm not aware of any issue like that.
Of any issues in Summit, no.
If you can send a separate email with some voters that have personally reached out to me where that has happened, and if, Rosemary, if you're the appropriate person, I'd be happy to discuss.
No, actually, you should direct your concerns to the Union County Clerk's office. The Union County Clerk is responsible for sending out all the vote-by-mail ballots.
Okay, so voters should go directly to Union County.
Yes, if you'd like to jot down the number or call me in the morning, I'll be happy to share it with you, but the number's 908-527-4000, and the operator will transfer your call to the clerk's office.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Are there any other public comments or items not on the agenda? Okay, moving on. I'm going to take that in. No, all right. At this point, we'll move on to ordinances for hearing. All right, so our first ordinance is a finance ordinance for Councilmember Vartan. But first, Madam Clerk, could you please read the ordinance?
Thank you, Madam President. Bond Ordinance Number 20-3212. A bond ordinance providing for the local unit's allocable share of flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by and in the City of Summit in the County of Union, State of New Jersey. The local unit appropriating $2,375,000 therefore and authorizing the issuance of $2,375,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I want to open this hearing with a little bit of history for those who are watching, who may not be familiar with what the joint meeting is or what it does. So according to the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties website, quote, "In the 1890s, R.S. Sinclair of South Orange wrote letters to surrounding communities asking for a joint meeting to discuss methods of cooperative disposal of sewage." So in layman's terms, Summit is one of 11 members or owners of this wastewater facility and treatment plant. It's probably one of the oldest examples of municipal shared services. So maintaining this infrastructure is critically important. This is a bond ordinance in the amount of $2,375,000 to finance the cost of Summit's portion of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties flood mitigation facilities project. So this money will be borrowed from the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, and FEMA has pledged to reimburse municipalities for 85% of the cost during the course of the project. So this project will be completed in seven phases. This bond ordinance covers Summit's portion of the funding for the first two phases. These phases are expected to begin in Q4 2020 or Q1 2021, and will take approximately 18 months to complete. I move to open the hearing on this ordinance.
I second.
Madam Clerk, are there any members of the council who have comments on this matter? Councilmember Bowman?
I just ask, as the City of Summit representative to the joint meeting, you know, I think it's important that we move this project forward. As you recall, when the joint meeting came and presented to us 18 months ago or 12 months ago, I'm not sure, last year, they described how close the facility had become to being shut down during Hurricane Sandy, and that this is a project that is, while costly, is definitely an insurance policy so that we don't have major environmental and cost concerns should another major storm hit and have the perfect timing that Hurricane Sandy did. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other members of council have any comments? Councilmember Naidoo?
And maybe, thank you, Council President. Maybe this is a question for Steve, since you're on the liaison. Is there any indication from the meeting minutes going on right now that there'll be a delay in this project because of everything going on with COVID?
Through you, Council President. Yet, no. They, while FEMA, as we know, has a number of struggles going on, they are meeting with the joint meeting, and we are progressing forward with the project on schedule. The only reason we're breaking it up into phases is more so that we actually can speed up the development so that we can take a portion of the project and move it forward and continue to review and engineer it going out.
Thanks, Steve. Thank you, Steve.
Any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I understand that FEMA intends to fully reimburse, and I just wanted to ask either Councilmember Vartan or Councilmember Bowman, was this in response to COVID, or was this the plan all along?
The funding comes from the I-Bank, the infrastructure bank, and I believe it's at 90% reimbursement from FEMA at the end of the day. Is that correct, Councilmember Bowman?
It's 85%, not, you know, but close enough, rounding up. And to answer your COVID question, no, this is definitely not a COVID issue. This is more of a response to Hurricane Sandy and the operations, so we can continue in storms.
In short, if the sewage treatment plant floods, you've got a really big problem. So this is a good planning and preventative measure and something that we should definitely be doing. Madam Mayor, did you have your hand up?
I was just going to say what you just said, so.
All right. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, I'm going to open it up to members of the public. I see Robert Weekly's hand up, and I'm wondering if that is an artifact from before.
Is it for this issue or the parklet resolution?
What was the topic that you wanted to speak on, Mr. Weekly?
The parklet resolution.
Okay. There actually is not a parklet resolution on this agenda this evening.
Okay, could I speak to the issue then?
Yes, that's fine. Let's finish this hearing, and then we'll let you do it afterwards, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. All right. So is there any other member of the public that has a comment? Okay, so, well, so with that, I'm going to call this hearing closed, and we'll move on to ordinances for final consideration. Councilmember Vartan? Oh, wait.
Thank you, Madam President. Ordinance Number 20-3212. Bond Ordinance Providing for the Local Unit's allocable share of the flood mitigation facilities project of the joint meeting of Essex and Union Counties by the City of Summit, Union County, New Jersey, appropriating $2,375,000 therefore and authorizing issuance of $2,375,000 in bonds or notes to finance the cost thereof.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This bond ordinance was the topic of the hearing that was disclosed, and I move to adopt this ordinance.
I second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Now, moving on to, we have some ordinances for introduction, quite a few, actually. Our first one is a finance ordinance, and Madam Clerk, could you read 7238, please?
Yes. Bond Ordinance Appropriating $4,225,000 and authorizing issuance of $4,23,000 bonds or notes of the city for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the City of Summit, Union County, New Jersey.
Okay. Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance appropriates $4,225,000 and authorizes bonds to be issued for $4,23,000 for capital improvement projects. As you recall, at the last council meeting, we approved the 2020 municipal budget. Included in the budget was the capital spending plan that includes things like road, milling, paving, sidewalk installation, equipment, and vehicle replacements, and other critical needs. This is the second step toward the completion of those projects. This is not the final step, however. The council will still need to receive bids and vote on each project and purchase individually. The hearing for this ordinance will take place at the next council meeting on July 8, which is a Wednesday. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Madam Clerk, we have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries. Moving on to Finance. 7177, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance providing for the improvement of the Broad Street parking garage in and by the City of Summit, Union County, New Jersey, parking utility and appropriating $380,000 therefore from the parking utility capital improvement fund of the city.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance appropriates $380,000 from the parking utility capital improvement fund to be used for essential repairs of the Broad Street East Garage. As a reminder, this money is not being bonded, simply appropriated from the parking utilities capital improvement fund. The hearing for this ordinance will take place at the next council meeting on July 8. I move to introduce this ordinance.
Second.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the third finance ordinance for introduction, Madam Clerk?
Number 7237, bond ordinance appropriating $710,000 and authorizing issuance of $710,000 in bonds or notes of the city for various sewer utility improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the city of Summit, Union County, New Jersey.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance appropriates and authorizes bonds to be issued in the amount of $710,000 for the sewer utility capital projects. Just like the ordinance, two ordinances ago, this is not authorizing spending. And I, the hearing for this ordinance will take place at the next council meeting on July 8th. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. And moving on to the last of the finance ordinances for introduction, Madam Clerk?
Number 7216, an ordinance to establish the 2020 salaries, wages, or compensations of and for the officers and employees of the city of Summit, Union County, New Jersey.
Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance establishes the salaries of all union and non-union employees in the city of Summit for the year 2020. The hearing for this ordinance will take place at the next council meeting on July 8th. I move to introduce this ordinance.
I second.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. So moving on, we now have a few ordinances for introduction for safety and health. Madam Clerk, could you read item 7111, please?
An ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets, and Subsection 7-8.7, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets of the Code of the City of Summit.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is in response to a petition received from residents of Waldron Avenue. I want to take council members and the audience back to our March meeting when, at the time, we moved to being not in person anymore. And as Council President mentioned earlier, we kept in mind taking these traffic items off the agenda until we could provide time for the public to comment. And so that happened at our May 26 meeting. We passed a resolution which would allow for a hearing to take place and residents to weigh in appropriately. So this petition was received from residents of Waldron Avenue that stated their roadway is narrow and had an overabundance of vehicles parked all day on the roadway, making it impossible for them to use their driveways and creating a hazard. And the police department, Traffic Bureau, did their review and the petition requested that the two-hour parking be from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for every day of the week, every day of the week. This was a change from the existing 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. time of parking. The other change on the street that is for, is that was brought up was for parking to only be on the east side of the roadway. So this ordinance is being introduced. The hearing will take place at our July 8th council meeting and I move to introduce ordinance 7111.
I second.
Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on, the second safety and health ordinance for introduction, Madam Clerk?
Number 7113, an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is created to reduce motor vehicle accidents and enhance pedestrian safety at the intersection of Ashland Road and Tulip Street, Ashland Road and Maple Street, and Tulip Street and Prospect Avenue. The ordinance will, is written to install stop signs on Ashland Road in both directions, at the intersection of Tulip Street and Maple, at the intersection of Tulip and Prospect, and will have stop signs installed on Prospect Street in both directions. So what's happening here is we are creating new four-way stops at these intersections. This is an ordinance that will be fully discussed at our July 8th meeting. We will have our city engineer, Aaron Schreger, come and speak about the stop sign ordinance and what criteria helps the engineering department make that recommendation that is then considered by our police department. So I move that we introduce ordinance 7113 for introduction.
I second.
Madam Clerk, could we have the roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on, we have Safety and Health 7202, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11, Through Streets, Stop Intersections and Yield Intersections, Subsection 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. The purpose of this ordinance is to designate the intersections of Cleveland and Windsor Roads as stop intersections and to install a stop sign on Cleveland Road. This is an introduction and the hearing will take place on July 8th. So I move to introduce ordinance 7202.
I second.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. And now for our last safety and health ordinance for introduction, 7193, Madam Clerk?
An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11, Through Streets, Stop Intersections and Yield Intersections, Subsection 7-11.2, Stop Sections Designated, Intersections Designated.
Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. Little background on this ordinance. As a part of paving the road, Wallace Road, and to meet ADA requirements, barrier-free ramps were installed at the intersection of Rose Lane and Wallace Road. Though a crosswalk lawfully exists at this location, it was not striped. In an effort to increase pedestrian safety and as a result of increased vehicular pedestrian traffic in the vicinity, it was made to stripe the crosswalk and also for safety purposes to install a stop sign. And so I move to introduce this ordinance, number 7193, for introduction.
I second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. And we have one last ordinance for introduction, Councilmember Little.
Council President, may I read the title?
Right, I apologize.
That's okay, that's okay. You got all eight of those. Item number 7233, an ordinance authorizing the public bidding to lease the building located on Block 2706, Lot 4, on the tax map of the city of Summit.
Okay, now Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is to allow the city to put up bidding for a leasing agent for the property located at Seven Cedar Street. This will allow us to retain a leasing agent who can deal with vacancies on that property in an expeditious way and would prevent the requirement that the city go out for a public bid on each individual leasing vacancy. So I ask that we move this ordinance for introduction.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could we have roll call, please?
Mr. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, so we are now done with all of the ordinances for introduction. I'm just going to double back and call on Mr. Weekly since he missed his opportunity on the comments, the public comment. If you'd like to just do that quickly, Mr. Weekly?
Thanks. I won't take much of your time, but thanks for the opportunity to speak with you. Bob Weekly, 7375, Union Place. And my comments tonight are also informed after a discussion with several business owners on Union Place, James Shoemaker, Sophie's, which is a salon, New Business, Shepherd Valley Cheese, and The Taylor Shop there. So I met with, with all of those businesses and they've asked me to pass along these comments to you. I won't take your time. I know you're all well acquainted with the parking problems in Summit and particularly on Union Place. I served on SDI for three or four years and tried, you know, numerous times with the committee to resolve those problems without result. But as you all know, it's very difficult to park there. There's a constant refrain of customers complaining about not having parking and taking their business someplace else. And so it's with that backdrop that I wanted to talk to you tonight about these parklets. We're anxious to see everybody get up and going. It's been a very difficult closure. It's been difficult for the restaurants, but at least, you know, the restaurants were able to stay open and do takeout, but particularly difficult for the other shops on that street who had no other alternative. And so everybody's anxious to get up and going and I think the council's coming from a good place on this. I appreciate that. But the, the addition of these parklets is going to cause a big problem and it's going to be a tremendous problem for these businesses that are not restaurants. You have 17 spaces at issue on Union Place, 17 parking spaces. Your resolution, if I'm understanding it correctly, could use up to 10 of those spaces for parklets. That may help the restaurants, it may not because they're not going to have any place to park either, but clearly it's going to disadvantage everyone else. And so I would ask you to give some thought to this. Every, the sidewalk cafe is great. I don't know if you've waived the fees for those cafes. I would suggest that the council consider that.
We already have.
Yeah, thank you. But this is really, it's inequitable. It's really inequitable to the businesses on that street that are not restaurants. Their customers are going to have no place to go. And to take up to 10 spaces out of 17 on that north side of Union Place is not fair by any means or measure. So I know you want to help. I know you want to get people back in town. We all do. But please consider the other folks up there and, and take some time to look at the numbers. I'm sure you've gone on Union Place, you know, pre-COVID at 5:30 and 6:00. It's bedlam up there. You can't get another car in the street and very often the police have to come up there and start directing traffic. And now you're going to add parklets. It's just not, it's not a practical solution. We're certainly open to working with council on other alternatives, but I would ask you to consider this carefully because I think it's going to hurt more businesses than it helps.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Weekly. I appreciate you
Thank you.
...taking the time to express your views to us. We will be having a special meeting on the 29th of, of June, next Monday, to discuss parklets. And by that time, we will actually have specific proposals in front of us. At this point, I don't believe that the 10 spaces that you're, that you're discussing are actually going to be what's going to be considered next Monday. And so I would urge you to take a look at the applications, the application packet on Friday when it's posted on the city website. And, you know, we will, all of council will be looking at this. And the reason we've structured this process the way we have with an opportunity for public hearing is to do exactly that. So council will have the weekend to take a walk downtown, take a look and see what's proposed and, you know, and think about this very carefully and weigh all the different competing options. We recognize that restaurants are just one of the interests involved in this, as are the, the local businesses and as are the residents. So we want to weigh all of those factors. And the best way to weigh those is to actually have the applications in front of us and know what is being proposed. So I would urge you to, to come back on the 29th, once we've all seen the application and then we can discuss further. Unless anyone has anything else to add, we'll move on to resolutions. Okay, so with that, we'll move on to resolutions now. Safety and health, Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I am pleased to give a resolution as a result of, state this resolution as a result of the appointment of our new chief of police and our police captain allowed a vacancy to open up in the position of police lieutenant. And the safety committee undertook a series of interviews of six sergeant candidates. And this resolution is a result of our police chief making a recommendation to the mayor and it has to come by council consent. And I am pleased to introduce the resolution that we appoint Sergeant Byrne as the police lieutenant effective in July. And I move that resolution.
Yours muted, Beth.
I second.
And Mayor Rades, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Just that after thorough interview process, both with the, the command officers and then the safety committee, it's very clear that Sergeant Byrne, soon to be Lieutenant Byrne, will be an excellent addition to the police department. Chief Bartolati has made it very clear, his vision for the department and Sergeant Byrne fits really well in that, in his plans. So he's a strong candidate, has been with the department for many years and I am very happy to begin working with him. So thank you for taking the recommendation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief Bartolati, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Thank you, Madam President. I think Councilwoman Hairston and Mayor Rades summed it up best and I thank the, the council for considering this resolution.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from members of council? Any counts, any comments from members of the public? Any couns- any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, so uh uh Councilmember O'Sullivan, were you raising your hand, or was that just? Okay, alright, so with that, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, are there any public comments for any of the finance resolutions coming up? Okay, I don't see any, so I'll I'll turn it over to you, Councilmember Vartan, for finance number one.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution authorizes the execution of an agreement with Union County uh for reimbursement of CARES Act funding. So this CARES Act funding is meant only for expenditures uh related to the COVID-nineteen global pandemic, uh not lost revenue. So I want to applaud CFO Tammy Baldwin and Administrator Michael Rogers, who have prepared these documents very quickly, and I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Um, any, okay, um, uh Councilmember Naidoo, is that a comment, or just? Just, okay, everyone's touching their faces these days. Okay, so um if there are no comments, then um all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh moving on to uh finance number two.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, this resolution waives the application fee for sidewalk cafes in two thousand and twenty. Um, in the interest of transparency, I do wanna mention that there will be a loss of about six thousand dollars in revenue um as a result of the adoption of this resolution. Uh, it is being done to assist in the revival and recovery of the local restaurants who have been deeply affected by the coronavirus pandemic. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Um, I'd like to just um point out that this handle, this will be retroactive for those uh businesses that have already paid that fee as well. And in addition, um this does not cover the lease fee for liquor license expansions. So this is for sidewalk cafes where there is no expansion of the liquor license, just to clarify. So um, I think this is uh, you know, this was something that we thought was important to, you know, we are trying to help businesses in any way we can, um restaurants and other businesses as well. And so I support this resolution, and uh uh does anyone else have any comments they'd like to add? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to finance number three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is a bi- adjustment to salaries as a result of step increases that will become effective July first, two thousand and twenty. Uh, just for the information of those watching, uh these do happen twice a year. Uh, so the next time that we vote on a resolution like this will be in December of two thousand and twenty for those step increases that become effective in two thousand and twenty-one. So I move to adopt this resolution.
I second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman.
Uh, you know, just in support of of what Councilman Vartan's uh saying is these uh salaries were used in creating the budget for this year, so it's important that that everyone realizes that this is all a plan and uh step increases that were uh budgeted for.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, um, alright, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Mo- motion carries. Okay, we're moving on to, we have two community programs and parking services resolutions. Uh, before I call on Councilmember O'Sullivan, are there any comments from members of the public on either of the resolutions? Okay, uh Councilmember O'Sullivan, would you like to take number one, please?
Yes, thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven two zero six. This is to reinstate parking fees and permits on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. As we try to get back to a more normal business environment, the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is recommending that we reinstate all permit requirements and parking fees on July fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. Through the adoption of resolutions by common council, Parking Services has provided free parking in Summit for April, May, and June to help our local businesses during the outbreak of the pandemic and the quarantine. The suspension of local, the suspension of parking fees in Summit since March has had a negative impact on city finances, but council unanimously felt it was worth it to try to help our business community any way we could. Part of getting back to a more normal business climate is having downtown employees park in their lots, commuters in their lots, and our shoppers and consumers parking in their appropriate locations. There will be a number of curbside pickup locations that will remain because our business community is still in need. These will have a fifteen-minute time time limit and will be enforced. A couple of notes regarding overnight parking that I don't want to go unnoticed, starting on July fifteenth. All overnight parking will be enforced. There is no parking on the street from two AM to six AM. And number two, anyone living in the downtown that requires overnight parking will be required to purchase an overnight quarterly permit beginning on July fifteenth. As we restart paid parking, I would strongly suggest using the Park Mobile app on your smartphone. It's easy to use and keeps you from touching nothing but your own personal device. And the more we increase our use of the Park Mobile app, the more money the city saves in transaction fees. Better for you and better for us. There will be plenty of communication coming from the city, so no one is taken by surprise on July fifteenth. Look for press releases and posts on social media platforms. And I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Uh, Councilmember Naidoo.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I think one of the things that that people may say is, well, our businesses are str- struggling, why are you doing this? And and there's never gonna be in where we're where we are right now as a country uh and as the, whether it's because of the pandemic or a combination of the pandemic and economic climate, it's never gonna be a great time, I think, i- in in the near term to decide, okay, today's the right day versus, you know, waiting another uh month, two months, three months. Um, I think uh Councilman O'Sullivan really stated it well as far as the rationale for choosing uh July fifteenth. But I would add one more thing. Our hope is, with the number of measures that we're undertaking, that people will come back to the downtown. And one of the things that downtown businesses need, as we know, and we just had a speaker talk about limited parking issues, right, is the need for turnover. And that's what helps businesses, people come in, they do their shopping, they do whatever they need to do, but they leave, and then they have other people come in. Part of the reason for putting in back fees is to create that same sense of the need for people to say, okay, I've done my business, I need to move along. And so I think it is actually beneficial to businesses in the long term, from a turnover perspective, to put back fees. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the council? Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. So there's, there's three short things I wanna add. So the first is, uh, I'm the um liaison to SDI, and I'm also a liaison to the Economic Development Advisory Committee. And in discussing the the dates with both of those groups, um, it seemed to be the consensus, uh anecdotally, that July fifteenth was a reasonable time uh that that through the course of June, businesses would be uh sort of getting getting started again, and then by July, uh it would be important to, uh as Councilmember Naidoo said, enforce, you know, having people where, park where they're supposed to be parking. Um, and then the second thing I I wanna mention is, there are, there will still be ninety minutes free in the DeForest lots. Uh, when, no, I'm sorry. Rita's shaking that, sorry.
Minutes.
Hang on. Rita, you wanna correct me there?
Yeah, one hour free in the DeForest.
One hour free, yes, sorry, one hour free in the DeForest lots. So there is still an hour of free parking available in downtown Summit, you just have to go to the DeForest lots. And then the third thing um is that, is that the online permit system, we know, is not great. Uh, we, we've known that for a while, uh and we are working on it, so uh Rita and her staff have been working to upgrade the permit system, um and over the course of the summer and the fall, uh we will have an upgraded permit system where people will be purchasing for the first time and renewing their permits online, and that process will be easier. So those are the only three, three things I wanted to add to that. Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Go ahead, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Um, there are a number of communities um around New Jersey and in the New York area that never suspended their parking fees. And there are a number of communities that reinstated their parking on June first. So we delayed as long as we feasibly could. Um, those other communities near us that started on June first are Cranford, Scotch Plains, Montclair, and Roseville Park. So um, there were a lot of communities that never gave up their parking revenue and some that have started recapturing it earlier than us, and um, I think it's appropriate, July fifteenth is appropriate.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan, I think you all raised uh very good points. This is a topic we've been discussing a lot over the past few months, and, you know, we are very concerned about getting the uh balance right. And I've been informed by um Nancy Adams from SDI that the SDI board was also okay with the um reinstating parking at this time. So um, our is that there is, um, there, there's a balance here that needs to be struck. Um, we need to have the turnover, as uh Councilmember Naidoo said. We need to, we, we do need the revenue, because otherwise, we're gonna be asking the taxpayers to subsidize this, and really, it's more fair to have the people who are shopping in the downtown uh pay for their parking. And um, at the end of the day, um, this is, this is the beginning of our road to reopening and something that I think uh makes a lot of sense at this time. So um, with that, if no one else has any comments, um, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yep, motion carries, uh Councilmember O'Sullivan, number two.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number seven two five zero to grant permission and set forth conditions for Summit YMCA Summer Camp on the Village Green. Part of Governor Murphy's Executive Order number one forty-nine authorized the reopening of summer camps with social distancing requirements. So our own Summit YMCA has requested permission from the city's Property Use Committee to use the Village Green for its summer camp. In a similar vein to our resolution that passed at the June ninth council meeting that allowed local fitness clubs to use the Village Green, the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is recommending that the Summit YMCA be permitted to use the southeast and southwest quadrants of the Village Green. Summit camp, uh, summer camp runs weekdays from eight-thirty AM to four-thirty PM, and it will go from July sixth through August twenty-first. There are conditions for the YMCA to use the Village Green. Some of these are insurance documentation for the Y, insurance documentation for outside vendors, pickup and drop-off for campers in the library lot, being flexible with dates that will take place on the Village Green this summer, promising to peacefully coexist with the fitness clubs approved for use at the Village Green. The Y will also use their own restrooms, uh the campers will not climb on the public art. In short, they have promised to be good neighbors. Camps like these are vital for many reasons, including socialization for children and childcare for parents. I am fully supportive of our YMCA using the Village Green for their camp, much like I am supportive for the entirety of Governor Murphy's Executive Order number one forty-nine, and I move this resolution.
I enthusiastically second.
Any comments from members of council? Um, I agree with what Councilmember O'Sullivan says. I think this is a vital um need for our community to have summer camps and places for for kids to go and places where parents know that their kids will be safe when they have to go back to work. Um, I um have also been reassured that the Y will um will peacefully coexist with any members of the public who also want to use uh the green. Um, you know, this is a time when there is a high premium on open space, and we all have to work together and and just be a little bit flexible. So I support this resolution, and um if no one else has any comments, uh, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Councilmember uh O'Sullivan and the committee and the Y for going to all the lengths to ensure the health and safety of all of the children who will be participating, the staff, and any passersby. This is an important uh way for uh folks to get back to normal, especially our children, so thank you.
Okay, any other comments from members of council? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, moving on to law and labor. Before I turn it over to Councilmember Bowman, are there any comments from members of the public? Okay, um, so Councilmember Bowman, would you like to take number uh one, law and labor?
Right. Thank you, Council President, law and labor number one, resolution ID number seventy-two fifty-two, which is to authorize the execution of an annual license agreement, use of a si- sidewalk for Root Steakhouse. Root Steakhouse is a popular restaurant located at Springfield and Maple Avenue intersection. Uh, they're looking to have uh the option of operating an outdoor cafe uh to be consistent with the cafe guidelines that have been established in prior meetings. Um, but basically, what they're looking to do is what other restaurants have done, and just expand their uh their offerings to uh to meet the the COVID needs. Um, basically, what we wanna do is we wish Harvest Group, the operators of Roots, and various other restaurants uh in the area success as we move forward, and I move this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from uh members of council? Um, I see that we have Chip Grabowski from uh the Harvest Restaurants. Did um Chip, did you wanna say anything?
No, just uh, thank you.
Okay, that's nice.
Hopefully it passes, so yes, thank you. Appreciate the support.
Okay, thanks, um, alright, uh, any other comments from members of council? Okay, um, it's um, if there are uh no other comments, let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Um, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to um law and labor number two.
Law and labor number two, resolution seventy-two forty, is authorizing the execution of sidebar agreement with the Teamsters Local seven or four sixty-nine. As we discussed in closed session, this agreement is a one-time uh agreement for a longtime city employee who uh to receive portions of accrued sick time from other city employees who wish to donate their uh their accrued sick time to him, uh to this employee. Uh, we wish this employee a speedy recovery, I move this resolution.
And I enthusiastically second it.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Naidoo.
I just wanna comment and say, what a wonderful gesture this is by all the members of the city to be doing this. I think it's extremely commendable, shows the heart of this uh team that we have working in City Hall that have been working extraordinarily hard through all this period of time, but this particular gesture towards their colleague is a really nice testament to who we have working in the city.
Very nicely said, um, Councilmember Naidoo, and I heartily agree.
Thank you.
Any comments from any other members of council? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Um, so now we're moving on to capital projects and community services. Um, before I turn it over to Councilmember Little, um, are there any members of the public who have any comments they'd like to add on any of these measures? I see a lot of the restaurant fo- folks out there, so this is your shot at it, so raise your hands if you'd like to speak. Uh, okay. Alright, um, so why don't we go ahead then, Councilmember Little? Um, would you like to start with uh capital projects number one?
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution one is number seven two three two, and this is to authorize acceptance of our Mount Laurel midterm report. Um, under the terms of the City of Summit Settlement Agreement with the Fair Share Housing Center, we developed um a plan for affordable housing, and under those requirements, we do um standard statutory midpoint review um which are submitted to the court, and um the report has also been distributed to the Affordable Housing Committee here in the city and will be published on the website. Um, so I ask that we accept this report.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, um, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, moving on to uh capital projects number two, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, council president. Capital Projects Resolution number two, number 7249, is to authorize the temporary and extended closure of a section of Maple Street. As we've discussed several times in this meeting and at our last meeting, this is part of the package of resolutions that were put forward to help support the reopening that we've been working on um with members of council, the city staff, and Mayor Radies since um almost the beginning of, of the pandemic. So this resolution would allow for the closure of Maple Street from the um alley to Springfield Avenue and then on the side of Springfield up to the alley. So um portions of Maple Street on either side of Springfield. This would allow uh restaurants in that area, including Finn, Fiorino, Roots, and Summit House, to have outdoor dining in that area and support um the residents' ability uh to come to these residents, come to the downtown, and also support these businesses in their reopening. And I ask that we um approve this resolution.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember Little. Um, I'd like to add that um one of the um stipulations in this is that it is pending approval by the state DOT uh for the, for the closure of these uh segments of the roadway. In addition, the restaurants have agreed that when, if the roadway opens up, that there will be no sidewalk cafes on the Maple Street sidewalk to allow pedestrians to have use of the sidewalk. So those, I think, are are the two things that the public ought to be aware of. You know, we've talked about this for a while and, you know, sort of how to, again, balancing needs. And what we came up with was that this would be for the months, basically from now through August 30th. So this will only be in place until school is, goes back into session, hoping the school does go back into session on August 31st. So that's, you know, one way that we sort of balance the needs of the public and the needs of the downtown. We think this will create at, you know, an atmosphere where it will attract people to the downtown. It'll help for businesses that employ 200 employees. And it will just create a, a feeling of, of life and activity in the downtown, which will benefit all businesses. Um, so I support this resolution. I did also have one question for Mr. Cascades about whether it would be possible to, some of those bollards that are on the corners that right now are, are stopping people from dropping, you know, from stopping, whether those could be removed when those, uh, when Maple Street is closed to allow for drop offs at the corner of Springfield.
Sure, uh, council president. So we can um look at that with the police department to make sure when we do remove, it's uh meeting all our safety requirements, but we will do so.
Okay, so that might be something that helps drop offs on the businesses on Maple that, particularly on the south side of Maple, who, who might have a limited um drop off position.
Right, yes.
We also still have the alleyways open, so people can drive down Maple and then take the alleyway to get out of Maple, correct?
That's correct. So the alleyway will be accessible, um, the one-way alley off of Maple through the back end of the parking garage back onto Springfield Avenue. You'll still be able to access that alley.
Okay, are there any comments from other members of council? Mayor Radies.
Thank you, council president. I just wanted to thank all members of council and staff who, um, first of all, have been working tirelessly and creatively to reopen um our downtown in a, in a safe way. So, but it's taken a lot of thought, and not every idea that's been floated was unanimously supported. And that's the way it should be. We, you worked really hard to talk to, you know, police, fire, EMS, DCS, to make sure that all these ideas made some sense. And what was sometimes initially floated as an idea got, got shot down, or it was amended and tinkered, you tinkered with it to make sure that it was feasible and, and uh safe. So this has taken a lot of time. I have, this is my fifth council that I've watched, and um it's an extraordinary time for all of us, obviously. But all of you, every single one of you have worked so hard, and the city staff are amazing. And I always knew they were, but boy, they're showing their true colors now. And it almost gave me kind of um goosebumps when I heard about what the staff is doing on, through the Teamsters Agreement for the um, the person who's getting a sick time. So but I have people who will come up and say, geez, you know, you guys, you're doing, you're doing a great job. And I continually say, I'm just one tiny part of a really great team. So um, I just want to point that out. It's been a lot, and I'm very, very proud to be a part of this team.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, councilmember Nigel.
Thank you, council president. Just uh on, on the specific resolution itself, I think what the public needs to understand is this is as much as what we can do as a council, I think, on this particular topic. The rest is in part determined by what the restaurateurs do vis-à-vis submitting of applications, whether it's uh to the ABC to get their liquor licenses, because three of the four restaurants have liquor licenses, and they would need to expand it into uh this public space uh and as well as what DOT does. I want to also commend uh the mayor regarding the Department of Transportation in getting them to move forward, in looking at what we were planning on doing with regard to this resolution. There's a lot of behind the scenes work that the public needs to understand goes on. But there's also the fact that part of what we can only do so much as council at times, it's either the state or the individual businesses, then, then have to pick up the ball and do the remainder. But this is, as, as I think we can all agree, this is a good step. It's a solid step towards more uh having people being able to come into the downtown. But people shouldn't expect after this council meeting that tomorrow suddenly people are going to be able to put out chairs and tables and so forth. There's other steps that need to be taken by this council.
Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, council president. And I'm looking at um our deputy chief Nelson there, who uh runs our emergency management, and just want to say, as we endeavor into this new territory, please wear masks. Please wear masks. Let's not do all this work of staying in and um having things go very well and mess it up without wearing masks. So that, this one's for you.
Okay, thank you, councilmember Hairston. Yes, councilmember Little.
Thank you. Um, thank you, um, councilmember Nigel for pointing that out. That was something that I meant to say is that um this is going to go to the DOT. The normally, under DOT requirements, the municipalities are only allowed to enact a road closure for a 48-hour period. So when we were um considering closing roads for outdoor dining, we were running into this problem of only being able to do it in 48-hour periods. And Mayor Radies was really um essential in lobbying the governor's office asking longer periods, which is what the restaurants were asking for. So I really want to thank Mayor Radies for, for doing that. This is going to the DOT. We've been told that it'll be a quick turnaround. Once we um, we presented to them and required a resolution by council to send it to the DOT. So we're doing everything as quickly as possible to get, uh, to allow for this. And I think the, the key word that we keep talking about over and over again tonight and at previous council meetings is balance. And we are really trying to get this right. And we, none of us have ever done this before. We are really um working hard, trying to think through all the angles, trying to enact this balance between the needs of the different restaurants, retailers, second-floor businesses, residents, everyone who um uses our downtown and who has been affected by this crisis. So this is one of the measures we've, um, we're looking at. We realized it's going to be a benefit to some. It's going to be um difficult for others. And we're, we, we think that the, the benefits of having this outdoor area for our residents and for some of our largest restaurants is going to overall be a benefit. And in that it will, um, you know, work out that way. So I support this resolution.
Any other comments? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, um, so we're on to uh Capital Projects number three.
Thank you, council president. Um, Capital Projects Resolution number three is number 7211, and this is to authorize the execution of a grant agreement from the 2020 Union County Infrastructure and Municipal Aid Grants. We are happy to receive this grant in the amount of $77,000 from Union County, which will be used to offset the cost of the Huntley Road Area Improvement Project, which has already been approved by council, as well as a um filing system for our county clerk, for our city clerk's office. All right, um, so we are very grateful to Union County for this grant, and um I ask that we authorize execution of it.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, um, seeing no comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, uh, last Capital Projects um resolution, councilmember Little.
Thank you, council president. Um, the last Capital Products Resolution is number 7234, and it's to authorize the grant application submission to the Community Compost and Food Waste Reduction Pilot Project. This is through the U.S. Department of Agriculture and the National Resources Conservation Service, which is soliciting applications for grants. We are looking to um do this grant for a community compost and food waste reduction. The, what the city is looking to do is to get funding for a waste audit, which would allow us to look at what portion of our um trash stream is taken up by compostable materials and whether it would be um advisable to enact a citywide composting pro, program. So the cost of the audit is quite expensive, um, but it's the way to move forward and to see if a composting program would be feasible. And if so, what type of size composter we would need um to purchase for the city. So um, this does require 25% match. If we were awarded this grant, we would be using that from previous recycling grant monies that we have available to us. And I ask that we authorize this grant application submission.
Second.
Thank you, councilmember Little. I'd like to add that this is, um, gets us additional information as well as um how to structure a food composting program. It allows us, by getting a waste audit, it allows us to know what the composition of our waste is, how much contamination we have from recycling, how much food, um, what, what, how much of it is compostable food waste. But it also allows us to um, to try to direct um measures towards reducing food waste and, and recycling more effectively. So it really gives us a wealth of data that'll allow us to manage our waste better and to save a lot of money in the process. So it's a, it's a great first step and a great opportunity. And um, I commend uh DCS for putting this grant together and working with Millennium to do so. And I'm hopeful that we will be successful. So I support this project. Any comments?
And the, and the other, um, councilmember O'Sullivan.
Yeah, I believe um, this, this um grant application was such a quick turnaround. I just want to be, uh, I just want to say thank you to DCS and uh Councilwoman Little and um Councilwoman, uh, Councilman Naidu for uh the quick turnaround, because we, this was such a recent thing that we found out about. And there was a lot of doubt whether we could get this done in time. So I really appreciate it.
I second that. Any other comments? Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we're on to the consent agenda. So um, I'm going to ask if there are any members of the public or any members of council who have anything they'd like to comment before, um, the consent agenda before we take it as a whole. All right, seeing no takers. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to councilmembers' comments and new business. Does any, councilmember of our town?
Thank you, council president. Um, I just wanted to briefly comment that today and tonight, there are elections still happening throughout the country. In the, in the midst of this pandemic, thousands of people uh in Kentucky have been waiting in line for hours. They've jammed into polling places, uh, and many were turned away, even if they were waiting online because they were too late to vote. So we all saw the similar catastrophes that took place in Georgia and Wisconsin. I am certainly thankful, and I think we all should be thankful, that our state government made the decision to make our primary election primarily vote by, vote by mail. Uh, and every single person who receives a ballot should immediately do the research, pick your candidates, and mail it back. I am proud uh that the people of this community know the power of their voice and the value of their vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments from members of council? Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, council president. My comment tonight is inspired by a local business owner who is frustrated that some customers don't want to wear a mask. Wearing your mask works. Social distancing works. Washing your hands works. Doing these three things has allowed us to catch up to the virus and crush the curve. Doing these three things will help keep you and our fellow citizens safe and allow us to continue through all the phases of reopening our economy. The mask is not for you, it's for your neighbor. Thank you, council president.
Thank you, councilmember O'Sullivan. Uh, any other comments from members of council? Okay, um, so with that, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay. We're adjourned.
Aye.
Well, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.